Good morning, congratulations to Clay County's newly elected officials. We're here today to administer the official oath of office. So I could have each of you, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I am John Evans.
Swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Minnesota.
And the State of Minnesota.
That I will be diligent.
That I will be diligent.
Faithful and impartial.
Faithful and impartial.
In the performance of the duties.
In the performance of the duties.
Of office of.
Of office of.
Fill in your office.
Clay County Commissioner.
For the County of Clay.
For the County of Clay.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yay! (applause).
It's Tuesday morning, January 6th. We'll call the meeting to order, and the first item of business is to approve the agenda, and we do have one agenda addition, which is the operation to publish requests for proposals for county electronics recyclers.
Can we agree with the addition?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Our next item is we have an employee recognition. Do you have that microphone? Is that working? Okay, our first longevity award today is for Dawn and Mick. Dawn is with, she's a financial workforce sergeant services.
Good morning.
So this is in grateful recognition of 25 years of outstanding dedicated services to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much. And Jeffrey Edinson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jeff, this is presented in grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County and its citizens. For those of you new here, we do this each and every, first Monday or first Tuesday of every month, and it's amazing how often we see these long-tenured employees that are here to get their certificates, and it's just nice to see that we have people willing to stay and work for Clay County as long as they have. Okay, citizens, do we hear? Do we have any citizens to be heard today on items not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the bills and vouchers.
Mr. Chair, move to pay the bills and vouchers.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. We have before us the minutes from December 16th, 23rd, and 30th, 2014.
Move to further minutes.
A second, then.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. I'm gonna have a drink of water, 'cause I gotta read a lot.
(inaudible).
Hmm? (laughing). Okay. At this time, each year at the first meeting of the year, the outgoing board chair does give a status report in the state of the county, and so today it's my turn to do that, and I want to thank our county administrator, Brian, for helping put together some statistic and information here for the public. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the staff of Clay County, I am pleased to present the State of the County address to the citizens of Clay County. In this report, I review the mission of Clay County government and highlights of the activities, issues, and project implemented in 2014. The text of this message can be also found on the Clay County website homepage, State of the County address, January 6th, 2015. The mission of Clay County government. Clay County is dedicated to providing services to the public in an efficient, responsible, and professional manner. Services will be delivered in a caring, humane environment. Clay County is dedicated to providing work environment where we respect the dignity and recognize the merit of each individual employee. Clay County is committed to a policy of open government. In 2014, 2014 has been a very busy year for countywide accomplishments. We were successful in the conversion of our elected auditor treasurer and recorder positions by the county board. We have continued to make real progress toward financing of a new correctional law enforcement center. A long overdue remodel of the Department of Motor Vehicles and Drivers License facility is complete. A county surveyor will no longer be appointed, but a process will be delivered to implement the recording of surveys. Some of our departments have worked through lean process to improve efficiencies. We have continued to improve on infrastructure with replacement of the elevator in the family service center, and that was causing a lot of trouble. Last Tuesday, we said goodbye to Long Term Commissioner John Everett, and John's here today, and it's nice to see you, John. Today, we welcome our newly elected commissioner from District 3, Jenny Mojo.
We have a series of contracts.
Our 2015 operating budget and tax levy. On December 16th, 2014, the County Board of Commissioners adopted the annual operating budget and the tax levy for the year 2015. The total expenses for the 2015 are estimated at $69,212,000. The revenue sources necessary to cover these expenses include $26.15 million in property tax levy, state aids, numerous grants, service fees, et cetera. The $26.15 million in prop tax represents a 3.9% increase in overall tax levy. Then I'm gonna get into a little bit about each department here. The Highway Department, successful completion of the two-year bonding of highway projects, successful completion of the joint cooperative project with the City of Moorhead for the necessary improvements to Allen Street, completion of the Department of Motor Vehicle parking lot improvements, and completion of the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan document. Social services, demands for services remain high in social service as we continue to address the needs of vulnerable citizens in our community suffering from poverty, homeless, abuse and neglect, and mental health, chemical health, and other disabilities. As a state-supervised, county-administered human service agency, social service is responsible to administer many state and federal programs as we provide mandated intervention services for individuals at risk of harm to themselves or others. To carry out these functions, social service works with a multitude of agencies and provides in our community to coordinate, streamline services to our citizens. Starting in January of 2015, Clay County Elder Abuse Coordinated Response Team will join the Cass County, North Dakota, to create a joint multidisciplinary team to address elderly abuse issues. In addition, Clay Counties are, the Clay and Cass Counties are working to together in a coordinated and disciplined response to the sex trafficking of youth in our area. Given our location in interstate corridors, this is a growing concern in the Fargo-Moorhead area. Increased mental health services in our schools is also a priority and a collaborative effort in ongoing with schools' mental health providers in the community and county social services. Public Health. Finalized all the requirements with the Department of Health to end the Clay County Community Health Board and enter into a four-county health board with Becker, Clay, Otter Tail, and Wilken County. This new community health board will be operational next month. Expanded our medical detox program to include clients from North Dakota, thus keeping fixed costs down. Solid Waste Management. Became a member of Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Authority. We installed scale, the scale at the landfill, and take-back jack resulted in 15 tons of pumpkins being recycled.[772.54][772.54](laughter). That's a lot of pumpkins.[779.25][779.25](laughter). And it made the news. Electronic and household hazard waste collection, Barnesville and Holly, have been implemented. Improved our methane flares at the landfill, which reduce gases being burned off into the air. Most importantly, selected and employed a new manager of our solid waste and recycling program, and we're glad to have him onboard. Information Services. As we continue to strive for the best online service feasible for staff and citizens, we moved to a new website software in 2014. This enhanced system permits our departments to maintain ownership and update the content on their own pieces of a website. Additionally, social media connectors are allowing Clay County to send important information directly to Facebook and Twitter. We will continue to utilize these systems to provide timely information to the citizens of Clay County. Our Sheriff's Office, possibly our most visible county department, is our Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Urquhart keeps his, keeps high visibility, representing all of us in public safety functions. Continuous updates have been made in the jail, but at some point, a new jail will be needed. We continue to transport more prisoners, and the costs rise. We lost an additional six beds in 2014 to comply with the Department of Corrections standards, and that just means we also have to send more inmates out to other facilities at higher cost. The Sheriff's Department has secured enough private donations to reinstate the K-9 program, and we would like to thank the public for their contributions for that. The West Central Regional Center, the West Central Regional Center offers secure and non-secure programming to both male, female, youth between the ages of 11 and 18. We have contracted with the Cass County, North Dakota, to provide service for their juveniles as well, and that was something that was done this year with the help of Commissioner Wayland, and it's going to be a really good thing for both Cass and Clay Counties and our other members. The Assessors Office, they purchased a new CAMA software system which allows coordination with the City of Moorhead. Veteran Service Office. The Veteran Service Office supports the claims and needs of over 12,500 veterans and their families, managing their lifetime case management files. The Veteran Service Office completed conversion to electronic files. They also launched use of Veterans Gap Fund. The first Clay County Veterans Conference was held, which was the first of its kind in Minnesota, and we thank Tom for that. I happened to attend that, and it was a remarkable event. We will support the Clay-Becker Veterans Court, and we are dedicate, we have dedicated volunteers and local partners providing moral-building activities to veterans. Our strong collaboration with the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon at Moorhead continues to be nurtured and well-represented. Their donations and assistance to the Veteran Service Office is greatly appreciated. Annual Audit of Clay County Finances. In November 2014, the Minnesota State Auditor's Office presented its report on the annual audit of Clay County's accounts for the year, ending in December 13th, or December 31st, 2013. In the issuance of this report, the State Auditor has issued an unqualified opinion of the county's financial statements, which means that in the opinion of the State Auditor, Clay County's financial statements conform to the applicable accounting standards. In closing, the Clay County Board of Commissioners is committed to the delivery of services in an efficient, cost-effective, and professional manner. We place a high priority on open communications with our citizens, and we welcome your input. Please feel free to contact any of the county commissioners or county administration if you would like to share your feedback or suggestions. Our contact information is listed on the county website. Thank you, and have a good year. That's that. Thank you, Brian, for writing that. So with that, we are looking forward to another good year with progress being made, and having Jenny on, we're gonna get some, obviously, some new insights in some areas, and we're gonna probably see a more of a shift in maybe some committees than we've seen in a while, which might be a good thing for everybody to maybe give up something and try something new and let somebody else learn some things. So at this point in time, I would open it up for the election of the 2015 Chair and Vice Chair, so I would, at this time, accept any nominations for Board Chair.
Mr. Chair, do you want these done one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay, I would nominate Commissioner Wayland for Chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Commissioner Wayland.
I'll second the nomination.
We have a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations closed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Congratulations, Mr. Wayland.
What luck, what luck.[1135.75][1135.75](laughter).
Now, I have to tell you, judging by experience and knowing that he's done this before, he's the only one who uses the hammer.[1145.25][1145.25](laughter). So when you come in here, be careful.[1148.04][1148.04](laughter). So, okay, well, Mr. Wayland will let you take over.
You're Vice Chair.
Yeah, you can do the Vice Chair.
Okay, moving on with the agenda, we have the Vice Chair. Any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would move Commissioner Gross as Vice Chair.
I have a second.
I'll second that nomination.
We have a nomination and a second for Commissioner Gross for Vice Chair. Any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries.
I do have a question. Has it always been just a rotation thing?
Yes.
Is that how it goes? I mean, we don't, okay. I was just wondering how the process works, you know, just.
It's a rotation.
Very good.
So you can't get out of it, Frank?
No, I was just, we could've probably eliminated this process here, right?[1215.25][1215.25](laughter).
Established Board of Commissioners meeting schedule for 2015. We have that in front of us.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we maintain the ongoing Tuesday 30 meeting schedule throughout the year with the exception of the fifth Tuesday of the month. Is that correct? How are we doing?
Second to motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Designation of the 2015 newspaper, is official county newspaper. Do we have any information on that? I don't, I didn't have that.
I think we have.
Mr. Chair, do you, do we need a separate motion for each of these?
I would say we do, yes.
Okay, I move Resolution 2015-1.
Which is to appoint the Barnesville.
Barnesville Record Review.
Right, okay. Any discussion?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Is that just a third, and do we just move from one newspaper to the other on that one, too? From Holly to Clay County to Barnesville?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Gross, that's what we are suggesting, that a rotation take place.
Rotation, okay, okay. Thank you. Each one of them, each one of these resolutions and each one of their services, some provided a little bit more of a service than the others, and they're, but they all reach a fairly significant part of the population, part of the population, so traditionally, what we've done in the past was to rotate it so each of them gets a chance to do those different areas.
And, Mr. Chair, last year, we did incorporate the FM Extra into the cycle, and that's what's being rotated. There's four newspapers here that are being rotated through.
And we had a lengthy discussion on that last year about this, so.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Resolution 2015-2.
I would move 2015-2.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Resolution 2015-3, the Holly Herald.
I move Holly Herald, who does an as Clay County Commissioner, to publish the first printing of Clay County financial statement.
A second, that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Resolution 2015-4, Clay County Union.
I'll move to approve the Resolution 2015-4.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. And the 9:00 AM, we're a little bit ahead of schedule this morning, but we're, discussion regarding the request for step increase for veteran service representative. Mr. Burke and Tom, good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning.
Brian?
Morning. Morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. There's, last week, we had a discussion, or you folks had a discussion in regards to, well, I guess several of us got involved in the discussion last week, so, yeah. We have a few steps that we have to go through in order to get there because of the discussion last week, so.
Okay, so I need a motion, we tabled that at our last meeting, so I need a motion to remove that.
Yeah, I would move, I would move, remove it from the table.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries.
And then, Mr. Chair, if we could, so that we open this up, there was a motion that was made last week and seconded, and we could have a little discussion on that right now. I guess what we did do is we met in committee after the board meeting last week and had a extensive discussion, discussing the pros and cons and the need for this position and the value of this position, and the qualities that this individual brings to this position, and so we do have an agreement out of committee and with Mr. Phil Uchis and his director, or I should say, his directorship, and what we would like to ask of the board right now is that if you would consider removing the motion of last week, and that would need the consent of the motion maker, which was Commissioner Ingersoll.
Mr. Chair, I request for you to move the motion.
Send the motion from last week. Can I second in that? And I would agree with that, so we have a motion for that. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries.
And then, Mr. Chair, what you have, what we have before you is the Veteran Service Office and the Personnel Issues Committee would ask that you consider a motion to place the Veteran Service Officer Assistant on a, she is on a grade 14, Step 3 currently, and ask that you make a motion to place it on Step 5 with an effective date of 1/1/2015 with a six-month step increase to Step 6 at July 1st, 2015. Now, the rationale that we reviewed in regards to this is, this is an experienced person that's coming from within the office. This was a new position that was created through the PIC committee. This individual brings a lot of qualifications, a lot of certifications that of national standard brings to this position, and we feel that, the committee feels that that's justification to put it on Step 5 with consideration of going to Step 6, July 1st, this year.
Okay. Tom, any comments from you on that?
That's the agreement that we came to, and I'm totally fine with that, and appreciate you bringing that up for me.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, I, first off, Tom, I'm glad you took the patience with us to go through this and have that last meeting. I think when we met as a PIC committee, we were able to get to some of those qualification issues that helped us get to where you were recommending this be, and I know Jenny had an opportunity to sit in on that meeting as well. So, thank you for that, and I, you know, I think you have a, just a first-class person here that is deserving of this, and I think the requirements that she brings does add to the request to be moved, so I've supported that very much. Thank you, Commissioners.
And one, Mr. Chair, one additional comment. This is a very specialized field. It's the only position in county government, and you have made those considerations when you looked at nurses in the past and the qualifications, because public nurses are in a different classification as well, not a lot of, lot of, oh, there's a higher demand out there than there is supply for these positions, and in this case, this is somewhat the case with this. We discussed this heavily as well, so I think there's certain justification for it.
And I, if I can, Mr. Darren, the original motion that had been made last week, I think, concerned us because there was no precedence in doing what was proposed to do in that original motion, and this particular process and going about it, we certainly, and Darren has backed up the fact that we do have precedence where we have done some of these things, and that's been part of our concern all along, is that we want to maintain the integrity of the system for all employees throughout the county, and that was one of my ultimate reasons why I had opposed and wanted to table that first motion, so I just wanted to add that, those comments.
Any further discussion? Frank?
Have we, have we done, when you say precedent's been set, have we done a When you say precedent's been set, have we done a six-month step increase for someone else, then?
Yes.
We have, huh?
Yes. Yes, we have.
All right.
Any further discussion? Board's wishes?
We have no motion on this issue. I would... I would move the recommendation from the PIC Committee as what has been explained by Administrator Berg.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing the process, and I appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a good day, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Frank.
Let's see. The next item on the agenda, review liability insurance coverage information for Partnership for Health. Kathy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Ms. McKee.
I sent the information in regards to the Community Health Board request, and that was to review the liability insurance information. I also sent the information sheet that MCIT sent in regards to the liability insurance. So the request from the Community Health Board is just an opinion, so each board will just give an opinion, and then the Community Health Board will come together in February and make a decision about the liability insurance. So hopefully, you've read that information. They're really considering whether to obtain the liability insurance. The Community Health Board, of course, is its own joint powers entity. There's no property that we own. There's no employees with that joint powers agreement. So it's just to the coverage... I'm sure the cost of 59-51 covers what it is that is needed for the liability insurance just to protect those members of the board, of which Mr. Gross is a member. Now, with Clay-Wilken Community Health Board, we did not have liability insurance. I suppose part of that was it was a full... The full Clay County Board and the full Wilken County Board. I don't remember. I wasn't here when that was formed, so I'm not sure why there wasn't a consideration, or maybe there was, for liability insurance, but we didn't carry that. So the question for this board is just a recommendation about obtaining that coverage, or would the counties cost share if there were any claims? I suspect the claims could be against the open meeting laws or data practices would be probably the... Any claim that would be... Would come forth. Are there any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Jenny?
My... The 59-51 is for an annual coverage?
Yes.
Is that... Is that Clay County share?
That is the full coverage that MCIT has approximately given us that amount.
Jenny, did you have any other questions? The... I'm concerned here, you know, looking at the mission of the Joint Board, and under normal businesses, and you're looking... You look back at what the Clay-Wilken did, you know, there wasn't a lot of things that we did that would lend to the fact that there would be potential lawsuits against us, other than the fact that somebody, like you said, might come and say, "Well, you know what? You didn't follow open meeting laws correctly," or something like that. But what happens... What happens in a chain of events where something serious can happen in a region where we have a massive outbreak? And we have this collaborative health group, public health group now, and in chaotic times, sometimes things might not go smoothly. And could that generate some sort of a decision or implementation of something that could lend to later lawsuit?
Not with the Community Health Board. The... In any type of emergency, we have all of our MOUs in place. We would operate... The Joint Powers Board would designate those responsibilities back to each county and each county board. So in other words, if we had an outbreak in Clay County, it's still under the authority of this board. We could work collaboratively across those four counties, which we've done in the past, but we always have, you know, the approved agreement through the MOUs.
I guess... I guess I am one to advocate that we should have insurance coverage. I just... We're... I just... I just see this happy lawsuit world that we live in, that every time some little thing can go wrong, that we can be sued for something, and I would think it would be not in our best interest to not have coverage, and I guess I was looking for your thoughts on that.
Well, and in the MCIT document, it states that the Commissioners serving on the Joint Powers Board are covered by the county's liability coverage, but only for their individual actions, so that kind of speaks to what you were talking about. So it could be made a claim as a whole. Yeah, we wrestled with that back and forth. Of course, MCIT's recommendation is to have the coverage, as we expected they would. The risk is extremely low for a lawsuit against a Community Health Board. In fact, we don't... We aren't aware of any claim against a Community Health Board in Minnesota. That doesn't mean it didn't happen, but we are not aware of anything when we did some checking. However, there's always the potential, so...
Wayne? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. Kathy, this 59-51, would that be Clay County's cost? Would that be among the...
That'd be among the four counties.
Okay. And are you looking for just a motion or a consensus today from the board?
Right, just a recommendation. This board doesn't have the authority to vote about the liability, but the recommendation.
Are you obtaining coverage? I think that's a...
That's the first.
We're going to do that. And we would cost share with the other counties if claims were made?
Those are two options, so if this board recommends...
Oh, obtain coverage would negate the second one, right?
Correct.
Okay. I am in favor of that.
Can we... Can we get Jenny's thoughts on this?
Well, you know, that... One of the downfalls of joint powers arrangements or collaborative cooperative arrangements is that you take it to the level of joint powers entity. Now, it's a brand-new entity as if it was, you know, a separate person or a separate business, and it does require its own insurance. And we kind of talked about this when we were talking about the trail, the Agassi Trail, when we were looking at some of that and some of those concerns. And anytime you form a joint powers entity, if that entity gets sued, they will not be covered under the counties that formed that entity. So it's kind of... I think it's not what people would think. You would think logically that the coverage would go with the county that makes up the entity, but that's not how it works. So, you know, my recommendation is for coverage because I concur with Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Ingersoll that, you know, you don't know what's going to happen, and just when you think that you're going to be fine and nothing's going to happen, that's when something's going to happen. And we wouldn't want to put the county at risk for actions that we don't have full control over. And honestly, I think the premium here, split four ways, is pretty reasonable in comparison to, you know, the liability we could have if something were, you know, to happen. So that would be my thoughts, and I think we have to think more about that when we're forming these joint powers entities, and you just think... And it is, in many ways, positive to make these collaborations and work together, but you don't always think about the dark side of it, and this would be one of those cons in that kind of relationship, so that's my thoughts.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I agree with that, and I, you know, you... If you have four entities and an issue comes up, that may or may not have some liability that goes along with it, and you could be... You could be the dissenting county in a vote on something like that, and if the vote still passed and something was done and a lawsuit was generated, you're still a part of that lawsuit even though you disagreed with it in your dissenting vote. And, you know, so it's kind of scary to go in. I don't know that we should be involved with any joint powers entity without some sort of coverage, so... Mr. Chair, I would move that we encourage all member counties to cost share in obtaining the liability coverage for the new Community Health Board.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, just get a discussion here a little bit more. I guess I have a problem with the fact that this committee, this joint power is made up of Commissioners from each county, and we're already covered, you know? Why would we need additional coverage? It almost scares me to think that the Agassi Recreation Trails operated for, I don't know, 15, 20 years without any insurance. I don't think we had insurance there, and that was a joint powers agreement, too. And I don't know. How many joint powers agreements do we have in the county? Do we have more? Is this going to be the only other one that we got right now? I was just wondering whether they all have insurance or not? Extra insurance?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gross, I frankly, Public Health was before you just not too long ago with an agreement with the City of Fargo, reference, I'll call it a food bank. It's a food distribution that you're looking at, and Commissioner Campbell inquired about that very same thing. Who's covering the insurance here? And now we're straddling state lines and even... And I did inquire with Metro Cog about that, and they're going to make sure that the Wordage identifies that coverage on it. You're absolutely right, reference the Agassi Trail. That should scare us. It's a good thing it's in our review mirror, because that was potential liability on that trail, and all three counties would have had to step up to the plate and share in the cost of lawsuits on that. And then the insurance company would have to figure out who is going to pay what. So, yes, it's really wise to have, when you enter into a joint powers, it's wise to have that coverage of it. That's why you have to be a little careful. I mean, it's good to collaborate. It really is, and you get a lot more... You can get a lot more done sometimes, but... And Public Health knows this because we had quite an extensive discussion in reference to bringing the food issue to the board, because it was forming another joint power, and why couldn't we do it by committee of what we were working on? So if you form the joint powers, you really need to assure that entity. In fact, a couple of years ago, there was a lawsuit, and there's a limit on what you can sue for, like, I think it's one and a half million dollars. And they reached out to every one of those counties for a liability of a million and a half. Now they changed the law, so when you form a joint powers, that is a single entity, so now the maximum liability is $1.5 million on that entity. And that's a positive thing, because when you talk about this issue, not going into too much detail, but you talked here that there was a TB case in one of these four counties, and one of the counties has a nurse that is an expert in that field, let's say. So this could occur down in one of these other counties, but we could be liable if proper or improper action is not taken. So it's just best, since you formed this joint powers, to ensure it.
Do we have that for solid ways? Isn't solid ways sort of a four-county, or how many counties in the mall if there's a solid way? Do they have extra insurance?
I would have to say yes.
Mm-hmm.
We do, or we have...
We... No, we do have insurance. You know, we have to... I think we have to take a look and probably should review every one of our joint powers agreements for this purpose, but I want to give you an example of a joint powers group that, in my estimation, would not and should not need insurance, and that's our Clay County Joint Powers Group that we have. That's... We're together with the City of Moorhead, Oakport Township, the school districts, the colleges. That sole purpose, even though we're a joint powers group, we have no decision-making authority, so to speak. What we do is we get together and look at collaborative ways to work together as different government entities, and then propose... And we bring in, for example, we brought in Public Health to these meetings to discuss the issues going on in Public Health. It's a joint powers board that leans more towards education, helping other elected leaders learn the issues that are going on in the community. And then also then, at some point in time, when we see something significant, that we might send it back to each governing body to take action. But that board never itself takes actions, but yet it's a joint powers board. So that would be one where I would say, "Why have insurance for that?" Because you're... That board itself has not gotten any authority to vote on anything that could cause a legal confrontation. My concern is that the board, such as the newly-created Health Board, does have the ability to vote on issues that could potentially have the risk of a lawsuit. And that's why, in that instance, we should have that coverage.
I think each joint powers board, then, it looks like, should be looked at individually in whether this is a something, you know? Probably each time we become involved in a joint powers board, we should probably have that as one of our important questions that we ask, should we or shouldn't we not have coverage? And is that... Would you agree with that, Jenny?
Yes.
I guess that's what I was leading up to, you know? And not that... I feel, too, we should have insurance. I mean, I want to be covered. But all of a sudden, you know, why is this the first time? I don't know if it's the first time it's been brought up, whatever, you know? But why is it now that we're all of a sudden... Do all the others have? We should probably be looking at all the other cooperatives that we have, or whatever you want to call them, joint powers, cooperatives that we have, you know? Probably those all need to be looked at. I mean, are they covered or aren't they covered?
I know we've gone through this.
Probably it's been covered. I mean, I just haven't been involved in it, so...
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of questions about the... We clearly don't have the authority to approve this today.
Correct.
What... Have you heard from the other participating on their recommendation?
No, everyone is bringing... The other counties are bringing it forth sometime this month, so we'll hear back from the other counties. But the Community Health Board has the authority and will vote on that based on whatever recommendations each county board gives.
I'm of the opinion that I think a fourth of this cost to prevent any lawsuits. Not having it would seem to be a risky behavior that we just can't afford in this state of Asia.
And also to note is, we have one community member on this board.
Yes.
So each of the counties will... We don't expect that community member to make their own payment, because we'll have a community member on the board from each county eventually.
It rotates.
Exactly. So those counties, the counties that are in part of this partnership, will share in the payment of her cost as well, which is part of that 59-51.
Well, I think what, based on Commissioner Mojo said, I think that we can be the leading group in the forefront in coming out and saying, "Let's get this coverage."
Wayne?
I was going to say, we have a motion on the floor, but do we really need one for this, or do you want...
Well, it's to... The motion is to support the purchase of insurance.
I think Frank seconded, though.
Yeah, we have a motion. Second. Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All the same side, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy, have a good day.
Any ladies?
Yes.
Okay. Review of committee appointments.
Excuse me. Particularly agenda addition.
Oh, that's... I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Our agenda addition, authorization to publish requests for proposals for county electronics recycler. Come on up.
Morning, Shannon.
Morning, Shannon.
Good morning. We are just asking to put out a request for proposals for a new electronics recycler. Our current recycler has lost their contracts with the manufacturers, which means they have proposed a significant cost increase to us. We have put out to other counties, surrounding counties, to see who they're contracting with currently and how they're handling their electronics. with currently and how they're handling their electronics. We also have a list of electronics contractors who have contacted us and would like to provide services. So we'd like to put this out and see if we can do better than the new proposal from our current recycler.
Do you have a?
Discussion?
Do you have a, do you have a time, is this, would this contract be for how long a period of time?
What we anticipate doing with the contract is making it through the summer of, well, through July, excuse me, through June of 2016, because the program years for electronics collection run end of June to end of June, so the reporting years to the state. And also by that, by that time, we will know more about if we go forward with the new facility.
Right, and that was the reason for my question.
Correct.
I didn't know if we were going into, if we were looking at a three-year deal or something.
Right, no, we, we'd make it to line up with, with the anticipated changes coming with in solid waste.
Okay, any further questions for Shannon? Any board's wishes?
I would move forward with the request for proposals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Have a good day.
Okay, now review of committee appointments. So, let's see, we've got Lake Agassy Regional Library, FM MetroCog Council of Governments, Northwest Emergency Communications Board, Lakeland Mental Health, and then the AMC Policy Committees and?
These are, these are all ones that need resolutions, I believe, that have to go in, right?
That communicated with us.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair? Kevin, you said the, you need a board of particular resolution. I would prefer to stay on the library board.
So we've got Wayne's on the?
Want to take these one at a time?
Sure. Wayne's on the library board, Frank, you're council of governments, correct?
Yeah, you're alternate.
And I'm the alternate, but, uh, I was looking at a, a change, so I was going to see if Jenny would be interested in being the alternate on the MetroCog.
That would be fine.
That would be a good one.
That's a good one to get involved in. Frank, you're the, you won't, this, you've been the president of the last year, right?
Yeah, chairman, yeah.
Chairman.
So the chairman won't come up for quite a few years again.
Well, let's start with, um, Lake Agassy Regional Library Board. We have a motion for that.
I'd, I'd move Wayne to stay on that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. The FM Metro Cog Council of Governments Policy Board.
Mr. Chair, I move that Commissioner Gross have that position and Commissioner Mojo maybe also.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Northwest Emergency Communications Board, I'm on that and would probably should stay.
I'll make a motion, you remain on that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Is that the, is that the same as the Northwest Regional?
Right, yeah.
Okay. And I was the?
You're the alternate.
I was the alternate on that one.
This prior one?
Right, yeah. Do you want to stay as the alternate?
I, I wouldn't have to if somebody, if somebody would like to. That one would require some travel, right?
It's, it, yeah.
The River.
We've had some ITV meetings, but it's the River Falls is typically where the meeting is, which is a?
Mr. Chair.
Really nice place to drive to in January or February or March, so it's.
Mr. Chair, I move that you remain on there and Commissioner Campbell be the alternate.
Okay, I think we already voted on me, but we have?
I'll second the motion to have Kevin on it.
Motion and a second. Kevin is the alternate, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Okay, then we have Lakeland Mental Health.
I would appreciate being appointed to that board if, if it's your wishes.
Now, who's currently there?
John was on there, right?
Okay, John, okay. Yeah, I would, I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a second for Lakeland Mental Health Board, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
I forgot to say aye, so aye.
AMC Policy Committee Appointments.
Well, I, I think if, if you're on that one, I, if you're, if that's your area, Health and Human, Health and Human Services would be a good one for you, Jenny, to be on.
The AMC.
AMC, and I would, uh, I would move that we?
Wayne's on that, all right.
Wayne's on it, the environmental and natural.
Okay, with that one?
I would appreciate that.
No, John's on environmental.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's up, so.
Okay, but you can be on one or the other, you can't be on?
No, that's what I'm saying, environmental.
You prefer the environmental?
Yeah.
Okay, I would move the, I would move Jenny for the?
Well, should we?
Well, it's up to you.
For these, we, we can, we can make one motion for all these appointments.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So I, I would stay on public safety.
I'm on transportation.
Transportation.
I got general government.
General government, okay, so we've got them all covered. And we have a motion to that effect and we had a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Okay, delegate, AMC delegate appointments.
Well, that would be, that would be all of us plus we, because we get eight, doesn't it? John, typically we get eight, so, and I, and I think normally?
So it's Brian?
Well, it's, it's the five commissioners, but you can change those for each meeting, um, for whoever you can have go. Once in a while, we might have Tim Magnuson as one, we might have Rhonda Porter as one. But we, we, you know, for going in, for example, into the annual meeting, you get eight and you want to try to take advantage and have all eight there for your voting, ability to vote as a county.
So what have we done in the past, the five county commissioners and then their three designates, or is that how we would, is that how we've done it? Brian, do you recall?
We have, Mr. Chair, and I, I don't know, it just seems like naming you five and they always send out for renewal or revi, vision before the annual meeting and that's when we add the ones that are planning on going. It's, you know, Dave Overbow, Highway Engineer is very important and Social Services and?
You know, and I would, I would think, uh, I would think, Brian, that may be a good way to do it, we could have, have somebody listed and then you can change that.
Sure, maybe that is.
So I would, I would, my suggestion would be is that we'd have Brian Berg and we'd have, um, Dave Overbow and Rhonda Porter.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
We have a second?
I'll second Kusheer Campbell's motion.
We have a second, uh, we have a motion and a second.
And I just, I just, we need to know that the, any of those, including the commissioners, if one of us can't go, we can be dropped and somebody else can be added, right? So it's just, it's just to give them some names up front to have, that's all.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Okay. Now our committee assignments, were we going to go over that this week?
Well, I think we should start.
Start, yeah. Okay, well, since everybody had a chance, at least looking at this list, Commissioner Mojo needs a lot more assignments, so.
Well, she's going to get some.
Yeah. So I, I was at least looking, I would like to add the, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and then along with that, it's the Prairie Lakes Waste Authority, that, they go together, don't they? Solid Waste Advisory, alternate.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So you'd like to add those?
Those two.
I'd like to add those two to mine and then I would, if it's all right with Jenny, I would, you know, well, she's already been appointed the MetroCog alternate and then the Law Library would be a, a good one for Jenny to get on, if that works. And then with my list?
So you, so that you said the Law Library for Jenny?
Law Library and then I was the MetroCog alternate, so, and she was just appointed to that, so, my motion, so.
Are you giving me your favorites?
I'm giving you the best ones I could find, so.
I figured, so.
Well.
I know, I'm taking offense over here.
I'm just saying in general, as he's looking.
Other than trying to find a law library, that's a great assignment, so, so. The other one, I've been on the State Community Health Services Advisory as the alternate and so I don't, we've changed all that, so that wouldn't even exist anymore, right? I don't know, Kathy left, so did we ever get that resolved? That's the Shack Committee, so, so have they appointed people to that?
Well, I don't know, I know Doug Hibbs is the president now, but, uh?
Of, of our four county group now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, so, and, and I've been, as part of that, I've been on the, the Emergency Preparedness Committee, which I've been with the last couple of years and I, that I should probably stay with until we get, finally get it resolved, but I don't know if that's something, we'll probably have to talk to Kathy about that one.
We could table that.
Yeah, we'll have to see how, maybe we should talk to Kathy about that and see how, you know, how I should be assigned to that.
So you, you say you're also on the Emergency?
Public Health Emergency Preparedness is what it's called, P-H-E-P.
Have they met yet or did they meet or?
The, the Emergency Preparedness, well, it's kind of an ongoing thing, it, it, we have lots of meetings by phone that, and, once in a while in the cities, so.
Okay. Can I go through a couple of them?
Same one that Wayne is on? Wayne is the appointed and you're the alternate?
No.
For what?
State Community Health Services Advisory Committee.
Yeah, Wayne's, uh, I mean, it's on, under yours anyway.
Unless that's been corrected, I haven't?
It's on Grant's.
It's there.
And then Wayne's appointed. That's why.
Mr. Chair, there is a, you mentioned the Shack meeting, that is, that's a state committee that you go into St. Paul for, so that would not dissolve with this?
Well, but it's, it's appointed by, you know, by our, with Wilkin County, that group is how I assign it. So since we've changed that?
Oh, I see what you mean.
You know, so there, I'm assuming that Doug would be, from Otter Tail, would be the Shack rep and that I don't know if they've gone through that or appointed an alternate, but I could still be assigned to that FEP group until we complete our work on that, but, but I guess we'll probably have to talk to Kathy about that and see where, where we're at, so. So I think that's most of mine, so Kevin, you want to go first?
Yeah, I, I want to make, make comments, but then I, I really think we should probably take a look at these purple ones and, and get some of those over to Jenny and, and then see how, where she's at, but, uh, one of the ones in mind that, um, towards the bottom, the Regional Water Plan Joint Powers Board, I was the alternate on that and John was the, was the regular and I would, I would like to, um, take over as the regular on that and, and suggest that, that Jenny, um, go in the capacity as the alternate. Now, keep in mind, just because you're an alter, you're still entitled to go to all the meetings, any of the meetings you want and it's just a matter of, that's, that's the one who's there representing that gets the, gets to vote on the board, but, um, if that's okay, I'd like to see that, so.
Which one was that?
That is the Regional Water Plan Joint Powers Board.
Does the Basin Commission one go along with?
Well, the Basin Commission one, um, we, we don't get to select who's going to be on the Basin Commission, that is done?
Their board.
By another group has to, has to actually have you be appointed to that. Uh, we were fortunate to have John on there. I'm, I'm going to certainly try to, to, to get eventually on the Basin Commission.
Is that something we should submit your name for then?
Well, it wouldn't.
From the county board or?
It wouldn't, I don't think it would hurt to, to have that done, but, but that's something that we don't just automatically get to be on. You have to have background and stuff involved.
John knows.
John?
I was just going to comment that it's, it's that Regional Joint Power Planning Group that does appoint.
Oh.
And there's two, two commissioners from Minnesota, so from the eighteen counties, there's two commissioners that are appointed and two alternates. Stephanie Mirnowski is, is my alternate and I think she's wanting to be on too, but Jerry Doll was the other member I would vote that Kevin can take out that, but on the Basin Commission, but it's that group that does the voting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So he can, he can work on that from, from the?
The water planning.
Regional Water Planning Board then?
Yeah, and I, and I don't know, John, if it, does it, does it help to have a, a resolution from, have you seen that happen before, where they send?
It certainly does not occur to me.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, so that one, so, so Jenny, that one, that Water, Regional Water Plan Joint Powers Board that's over here, that can go to yours, but we just add the alternate behind it?
That's fine.
Okay, so that, um, and then, and I, I have a couple of other ones, so first off, maybe if I can go through here, the flood bio planning, uh, that's, that's pretty much gone.
Gone.
You know, so I, I don't foresee that being, so I've lined that out. The, um, Oakport Annexation is gone. The, I, I'd like to keep the Oakport Technical Advisory Group, because technically it's there even though it's now in the city of Moore, it's, that, that flood project is still worked on and I want to be part of that. Um, you know, so it's, uh, and then, and also the Oakport Joint Powers Board still does exist.
Well, it does.
Yeah, because it exists because there's that area of Track Three that's outside of what was annexed, that's still subject to regulation by the Joint Powers Board. My guess is if they meet once a year, it'll be surprising. So what I'm kind of interested to see, that Jenny gets a, a fair amount here too and I, so we've already got her going down this list of John, so she's already taken the AMC Environment and Natural Resource. Uh, the Buffalo Red River ditch courting would be a good one, Jenny, if you're willing?
I agree.
To keep that. County-owned property, every once in a while, we go through policies and procedures there and it's mostly in rural areas issues, so, um, it might not meet often, but if, would you have interest in that one?
Which committee? Oh, going over there.
County-owned property?
Yeah. I just think it would be good for us to go through what were John's and?
Is this Emergency Services Advisory, the one that Grant was saying should have been on his list?
Well, this, yeah, it's, it's ad hoc committee, but why couldn't there be two?
Well.
Was it on, was it on his?
It's on yours.
It's on mine? Wow.
I don't think it has to do with, it's, it's Brian Green's.
Oh, yes. Yeah, that was, um, that was really active quite a while ago when we were, when they were establishing the whole policy and procedure. That's not nearly as active anymore, but, and if that's something Grant wanted to be on?
Which one?
Emergency Services.
Oh.
Is that the one you said you wanted to be, have that or does it matter to you?
No, I don't, do they?
Well, then let's just leave it alone and why don't you, you take it, take that and I'll just stay on as ad hoc. I don't even, I don't even remember being to a meeting, but we're kind of going through these purple ones here. And I have to say Jenny would be excellent on extension.
Thank you. I'd appreciate being on that committee.
And I think, uh, I think you should be on the FM Diversion Land Management. I think that would be very good for you to be there.
I agree.
Family Healthcare, did we decide who was?
Well, I guess that's, well, I'm having a little bit of a conflict with that meeting, so I just assumed, I mean, I'll stay on as an alternate, if I'd like someone else to go with them. go with the, the lead on that one, if that's possible.
Mr. Chair, I mean, when does that meet again?
Thursday's at 5:15, I have a work schedule, that sort of takes, I have a tough time.
Jenny, could, would that be one you could, is that a bad hour or the day?
It's kind of a bad hour, if, I can take it if not.
Well, you know, try it out.
Unless we can change their time, I mean, it's.
No, they're not going to change it, but.
Some you can get to as a commissioner, but some you can't.
I'll take it if no one wants it.
Well, but John was the alternate, who's the, who's the?
I'll, I'll take the alternate, you know, I'll be alternate on it.
Who's the regular?
I am.
Oh.
Yeah, Frank is, that's what he's.
Oh, I see, okay, so you want to switch, you want to switch and be the alternate, and then?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. The reason I'm not speaking up here, because that's usually the day, you have lakes and prairies, library, almost always at the same time, so.
It's causing me a conflict.
I could take it, but then again, I might not get through, why don't you put me down for it, and Frank, you might be there as an alternate more than you would expect, if these others would interfere.
So you want the family healthcare?
I didn't say I wanted it, I said, I.
October through March, I have a tough time making them.
Yeah, I would take it, Frank is the alternate, but.
October through March?
There are kinds that I, because of other commitments, I wouldn't be able to be there every month.
Yeah, that's what my problem is. I mean, I've been making all of them, but I do have to cancel out some other things sometimes, so, that's, I was just wondering.
It's in town or out of town?
Maybe, maybe Wayne should be the designated person for that, and Jenny could be the alternate then, because it sounds like Frank has a problem with it anyway, so, getting there, so, is that, would that work, Frank?
I mean, those two take it, then, fine, fine with me, I can just go on.
It's in town, though, so that, then that would work, I can make it work.
If I'm just offered, that's fine.
What, what was he final outcome on that?
Wayne over there.
Wayne is going to be primary?
How about the Felton Prairie stewardship?
I don't know, what does that involve, John?
Well, this year for the first time in five years, but we did, we used to meet, you know, five years time, before that, it was, it was a meeting that met every month and in between, too, and, so I don't know, Brian, what do you think as far as what's needed in the future for that?
There is going to be some action on that in the next year or two, because looking at a different lease, and then maybe some development, and possibly even a sale, too, the, the DNR, or, or, yeah, the DNR may take over, may, that was discussed at our last meeting, so.
I think it's more important now than it has been the last five years.
For the last few years, yeah.
We went together and planned five years ago that we've been following, and now we need to go back and make sure we, we have here to plan or change it.
It's in my area, I mean, I could take over.
But this is in his district, yeah.
I can, I can take over, I'm the alternate now, you know, so.
I can move to alternate on that, then.
Jenny'd be the alternate, and then Frank would be the primary on the Felton Prairie.
Friends of Buffalo River State Park, that one, stated Jenny? Highway tracking, we had some conversation.
I'd be interested in that one.
I think Frank should probably move to that, so.
Okay, as we get these, we've got to start.
Make sure we're getting them even, I think.
Well, hey, we got to get some, somebody's got to give something up for Jenny, too, then, I guess, if we're going to be.
I'll take a soil and water, unless you want to stay on it.
Soil, are you talking about soil?
Well, if you are taking highway tracking, do you want to give up clay, soil, and water?
That's fine.
Okay.
Good, that would be a good one, Jenny.
Mr. Chair, if I could jump in on this for Jenny, it's been a while since I've been to a meeting, Clay County Joint Powers, that's on a day that I many times have two to three other meetings, and I would, I could that for Jenny, if she were, you're talking seven o'clock in the morning, and Kevin is on that, and then Brian shows up, too.
Okay, the clay soil, or the joint powers.
That would probably be a good one.
That's the one where we meet collectively, and then?
Yep.
We ran the whole annual?
Yep.
Okay.
If you're taking soil and water, then probably noxious weeds would probably go with that, mulch, or the noxious weed, that's, that's really part of soil and water.
Yep.
So then you, are you sure?
I mean, they don't, they don't meet, I mean, but it's part of the, the soil and water group, you know, it's discussed during their meetings, I don't know why it's a separate thing on here, I guess if there's an appeal, I guess.
One time it wasn't part of soil and water at all, it was a separate staff person, I guess.
Right, but now soil and water has taken over the noxious weed, so I don't know whether it's still a separate thing or not, they took it over.
Well, Mr. Chair, on, on that appeals board, it is a little different, because if, if soil and water requires someone to cut the weeds or something, or charges them for it, and that individual says, I'm not going to do it, I want a second opinion, I want to appeal that, then it comes back to the county board's authority, that you guys asked them to do the weeds, noxious weeds, but you did not give up the authority on, on the appeals part, so it does, it hasn't, it hasn't been on appeals for years and years, but it isn't.
I mean, I'll keep it, not a problem, like I say, I haven't gone to it, I just thought it was part of it, but.
I, I think it's a good association that it goes with, with soil and water, but separate, but it is a separate function, yeah, so I think it needs to be listed.
Like, we've never, we had never met, though.
Yeah, so are we going to move that one, then?
Well, like I say, I think it goes with it, you know, I just.
Then I'll take it.
I mean, like, we, that hasn't involved the meeting yet.
That's fine, they're separate.
So, so then the Historical and Cultural Society, that, you want that?
Yes, there you go.
And then the, same with Lakeland Mental Health?
I already have that one.
You already have that one, yeah, and Lakes and Prairies?
Yes.
Okay, and the Planning Commission?
Sure.
Everybody's jumping to their feet.
It's a lot of fun.
It's an evening, it's an evening meeting that causes me, it's on a Tuesday night, too, I think, isn't it?
It's kind of a conflict.
That's a conflict with mine, yeah.
And then you should have the oilhead protection for barns, that's your area.
Correct, yes.
And the wild rice.
Watershed.
As the alternate?
Who's the, Frank's the?
Frank must be there.
Lead.
Yeah, I got that one.
Are we close to even here?
Well, we, you know, we won't finalize these days, she'll, usually we'll have, Vicky will reprint this out, you can kind of see, but I, Wayne, going through yours, is there any of yours that you were able to?
Yeah, Corrections Advisory, I don't recall ever being to one of those.
They, they meet once, once a year at most.
But didn't you say something about the Joint Powers?
Yes.
So that was one, too, right, so?
Yes, and that's been taken care of.
I haven't.
Okay, that's good, that's.
Family Services Collaborative, I don't recall too much there, but, which is fine, and I had sent out a communication to you three gentlemen, and I spoke to Jenny about it regarding the Moorhead Planning Commission, and I think you do recall what that was, my.
Well, you want to stay on that, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
But that would mean, that would have to mean that the board did not appoint anybody this year.
Well, we won't.
That would be left out.
I was looking, too, online, I've got the MetroCog five-year transit plan, that could go to Jenny, too, I don't know that I've ever, do they have meetings on that, I've never been advised of that one. That would be part of her, part of the, part of the group of MetroCog things.
And now the, the personal issues, now that's going to go off of Wayne's as well, because it's going to be, that's going to be you and, yeah, it's going to be us two on that one, huh?
No, I'm assuming since most of these were John had in his capacity, won't conflict with times, right, I mean, I just, since I don't know the background of when they meet, looking at this, am I, I mean, we'll find that out later, maybe.
Sometimes you have some of your own that just do conflict, too, but it's, you just kind of have to.
That's fine.
And some of, some of, some of those, you, you kind of, you might have the influence to make one change.
Right, okay.
Or another.
I think a lot of these committees that you get on, it doesn't involve meetings, you know, you may, you may look at a lot of stuff here, you know, but there's probably only five, five of these that you go to a meeting at, you know.
On a regular basis, yeah, some, some are every month, or even more, and some of them were, well, I've got some on mine that I've never gone to, it's been six years.
Someone has, is emergency.
They don't have any meetings.
Yeah, it's just the Emergency Service Advisory, I don't remember even being invited to a meeting for a while.
So, I mean, as far as keeping it even, you know, you get on a lot of committees, but.
You know, and I think we need to, I think we need to recognize that some of us are probably going to be on committees that are going to be meeting much more often than they had in the past, when you look at the, the one that I think of, the major task that we're going to have was with our correctional facility and law enforcement center, that, you know, we're, we're talking about a lot of meetings going to be coming up on there, and Grant and I serve on that, and I, and I, the reason I say that is we need to be willing to maybe let something go to make sure that we have the appropriate time available to, that's, that's a huge project.
I agree with that.
That's a huge project, you know, so, you know, so I'm looking at some of my things here, and I, one of my things I actually thought of giving you was, was the Joint Powers one, too, but, but Wayne's already done that, so, so I, 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 I wouldn't mind Jenny to have you to start to learn a little bit about the internal health insurance, and working with the HR on the health insurance ad hoc committee.
Okay.
If you'd be willing to take that one, that, that, that one is typically something that Jenny or Darren puts together during the course of a business day here at the courthouse.
Great.
As a matter of fact, Wayne was also on that one. Yeah, okay.
They need someone on personnel, this is all.
Well, that, that one, that one is governed by the chair and the? Past chair.
So, you will be on?
No.
No, next year he will.
You, you can't get on the personnel.
It's the chair and the past.
The chair and the past chair, that's, so.
Oh, so you two are on that?
Yep.
Yeah, so next year it'll be you and I, and then.
Okay, all right, good. Oh, it's the chair, okay, why don't I just read what's on here?
How about, Kevin, the Oakport Annexation?
That one's, that one's, that one's lined out.
We're done with that?
The Oakport Annexation one is done.
How about the Joint Powers?
The Oakport Joint Powers still exists, and, are you on the Oakport Dite Technical Advisory, too, you're not on that one, are you? Yeah, but the, I'm not anticipating that Oakport Joint Powers Board being called very, very often, if at all, but there still is an entity out there, or some land that's controlled by that board, so. I would like to ask Wayne if he's, if he still wants to stay on it, I, I would like to stay on the insurance committee, but I wanted to make sure that Jenny, Wayne, are you, how do, how do you feel about the insurance committee, do?
Which committee is that now on?
It's the insurance committee that deals with.
You and I, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to stay on.
Okay, all right.
What was the issue?
Well, I was getting, getting more for Jenny.
Her, her college probably getting involved, too.
Jenny's just, okay, all right.
Why don't we?
So is it even without that health insurance committee?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Jenny, why don't, let's just leave that off yours, and keep it on mine, and then when, then, once Vicky redoes this and we look at it.
We can look at it next weekend and see where we're at.
That's typically what we do, is.
Then adjust it a little bit, and we'll be done, so.
Go over this a little bit more.
I just hope I got the ones with the best lunch, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Yes, you do, family healthcare.
I don't think I, I don't think I have any.
I heard you guys talking about that.
I believe.
No, I think they give it to you.
Jenny's got the County Planning Commission, and we're, we're keeping the other one as is, the.
City. Okay, well, that's a start, we'll take a look next week.
Finalize it next week.
And then I, I wouldn't mind the board, you know, it's, it's not going to be a secret to anybody, that I, I would like to try to get involved with that Red River Basin Commission, I, you know, so I'm hoping at some, some point in time, this board could send some sort of a, a resolution to the, what's it called here?
Brian, can you prepare something for us to?
Regional Water Plan Joint Powers Board, that, I mean, they should be notified that I'm going to be the Clay County's member, and then maybe there could be something added to that, that, that I am also interested in serving on the Basin Commission, and that it would be nice to have the county board's support.
But nobody's going, you said there's already two commissioners from Minnesota.
They're going off, though, so they're going to be replacing them.
Just Stephanie's staying on, all right.
So it would be a, a resolution of our support for Kevin to go onto the Basin Board, so.
Grant, this headwaters thing, I see there was attachment to our thing, are you still, is that yours, it was around the fourth page or something on?
The headwaters.
We.
Northwest.
The last attachment.
I think we made a motion for Commissioner Wayland and Campbell, didn't we?
On what one was that, what was that, the Regional Board?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
We, we took care of that one.
Yeah, we took care of that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, we're two, we've had most of that being cared, we'll review it again next week, and, Brian, I said Frank, go ahead.
I got one more, I got a letter from FM Cog, and they needed, they want a representative for Study Review Committee for the Holly Comprehensive and Transportation Plan, and they're looking for a representative for, from our committee to be on that, so.
That's your area, you want?
It's my, I'd be willing to serve in that, but I just, it's part of the FM Cog thing, and I'm on that, and.
Well, couldn't you, you would get your per diems just to Cog, I'm sure, is it?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's part of, if it's part of MetroCog, you would.
If you went to, if I meant, if you went to one of those meetings, you would get a per diem for it.
Right, I realized that, no, I was just wondering about the going to the, whether we want to appoint someone else, or, because, since I am on highway tracking now and stuff like that, it probably would fit in, you know, more, but I was, I didn't know whether I was going to get on that or not, and I, and they just, I told them I'd get back to them, see who, how we come up with appointments.
Somebody want to make a motion to appoint Frank?
I'll make a motion to appoint Frank to that.
Study Review Committee for the Holly Comprehensive and Transportation Plan.
That's what Jenny was going to say, and I'll listen.
We have a motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same say, motion carries, okay, anything else on this issue, Brian?
Mr. Chair, just for a couple, Vicky and I were going over some of these committees, and if they're still current, and, and, one we had a question on, was it's, it's under Commissioner Gross and Ingersoll, was Countywide Economic Development Committee, one says Countywide Economic Development, the other one says Countywide Economic Development Committee, now, would that have been the same as the Business Subsidy Committee that?
I think, I think, I think, I think the one that they were on has been replaced.
Okay, that's what I was kind of thinking, so that would be eliminated, then, off, off the list, okay, and.
Won't have to go to those meetings anymore.
You've addressed, you've addressed quite a few of the others, the jail needs assessment under Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell, we have a jail needs assessment, and then we also have planning for financial, for, for the jail, do you want those separate? Because they are the same, the same representatives in the same committee, would you like them separate?
Yeah, I think they need to stay separate, I, because we, we need to, we need to separate.
The finances from the?
The finances, yeah, even though, because we have different players outside of, outside of Grant and I, as the commissioners, you know, we have Lori and some of those people You know, we have Lori and some of those people involved with the finances, but when it gets into the design and the construction and all the other stuff, there's.
So you, so you've got also correctional facility design, construction, operations that the two of you are on, so that's three, please, then?
Well, I think, I think that could be, that could play, that could be the new name for the jail needs.
There you go, yes. That would be good.
I was on mine, too, as long as you're on it. I've got West Central Trails Planning. I don't know what that is. I've never, never been to one in six years, so I can maybe take that off unless there is such an organization, so.
You'll hear from them, I think.
Yeah.
Take that off, West Central Trails.
You'll have four meetings next month.
Vicky, what did you call that one?
The last that I said?
Yeah.
Correctional Facility Design, Construction, and Operations Committee. It's not on your lists yet, because we just did it two weeks ago.
Yeah, and that, and that would take place of the jail needs.
Jail, yes.
Okay.
Let's see, one other thing, this Heartland Trail Extension and Heartland Trail Task Force, is that two different things?
It could be just one, Heartland Trail Extension, I guess would be the.
I don't know where that task force goes, I don't know.
Well, unless it's the, the one that we formed, is that the recent one we, no, with MetroCog? That's the, yeah, it, it can be on, on our list, I think it can be under one, so. Just under Heartland Trail Extension, cover it, so.
And then there was one more under Commissioner Gross's. There's a budget, financial reporting, and capital improvement, and then right under that was campus improvement. I know he's on the campus improvement committee, as is Commissioner Ingersoll, but budget, financial reporting, and capital improvement, is this kind of?
That's also under Kevin's.
Yeah, that, that's one that, um. We haven't met in two years, I know that. That's been pretty important, then.
Well.
Things are going, you know, when things are going good, we should leave it.
But you know what, I, I think that's, I think that's, can come into play, though, the next time we reinstitute the next five-year plan.
Oh, yeah.
Capital improvement plan.
Capital improvement plan, mhm. So, again, we're, because we've been starting to talk about getting that next one ready, so I think that needs to stay.
Okay. And then, uh, is that different, then, from capital improvement, a campus improvement, then? They are so closely tied.
I would say the campus improvement one was.
That's one Frank and I are on.
Yeah, that was like, that was like fixing plumbing here.
Yeah. Motor vehicle, parking lots, so. Okay, well, we can, we can.
I have to agree with you on the capital improvement. Once we do that capital improvement plan, that should include all the building improvements.
Yeah.
I think it's the same committee. I mean, just because we're just going to do it every, once every five years, doesn't mean we can't move, meet this committee.
I, I think it's real helpful to have that input on an ongoing basis of what we're doing. We've, you know, we've got a project going on right now.
Well, I, I think then what we should, we should clarify are the difference between the two of them. And the, the budget, financial reporting, and capital improvement should be there to establish the five-year plan. The campus improvement could be one that, once that's done, that once you're, once you're dealing with the individual. For example, the Driver's Bureau over there was one project of the capital improvement plan.
Many.
That needed oversight by the county board.
Mm-hmm.
Is campus improvement ongoing?
Yeah, campus improvement can be ongoing, and those would be the ones who would monitor once the project at the capital improvement, budget, finance, and capital improvement have worked on to get into place. Those are the ones we're, we're actually getting five years' worth of projects.
Yep.
Once that's done, then each project, for example, when they did all the windows in the family service center, somebody needed to monitor that. That could be that campus improvement group.
Mr. Chair, I have to go along to what Kevin just said, but they are two different things.
Okay.
I'll agree with that recommendation.
I just, I think, Vicky, maybe if we can clarify it as to what their roles are.
Okay, anything else, Brian?
That, that helps a lot, thank you.
I may, Mr. Chair. Undermine corrections advisory. Can you run that by me, what that is?
Well, it's, it's met just once a year in the spring, so.
Who else? Is that yours, too?
It'd be me, yeah.
Okay. Have them let me know when they're going to meet, I'm right.
Yeah, it was Mike Stoltman's committee, and he's retired, so we'll see if it happens again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Brian, I think?
It's just ad hoc.
Okay, well, we'll move on. Let's see, where are we at here? Committee reports, um. Wayne, you have anything? Jenny, I assume you don't have any committee reports yet?
No committee reports this week.
Frank, nothing? Kevin?
Not since, no, not since last week, no.
I had some MRCC meetings. I was in Grand Rapids yesterday for MRCC, and we're trying to figure out what our legislative priorities are going to be to go after this year, and of course, transportation is a, a major issue, and I know the governor has already indicated it's going to be a major issue for him, and so greater Minnesota is having a lot of difficulty, it has for a number of years, getting adequate funding for transportation and roads and bridges, and so it's a major issue for MRCC that we're working on, and we're trying to schedule a meeting, uh, I, I'm on a subcommittee for transportation with MRCC, and we're trying to schedule a meeting with the governor to, you know, to get on his agenda, to, to advocate for the importance of our needs in greater Minnesota, so. Because it's a constant battle with the metro area over them trying to get all the funding for, for transportation issues, so. I think they still believe that crops and things are hauled by ox carts or something, because they, they think every dime should go to the metro area for transportation. So it's going to be a major battle again this year, but we're working on that, so. That was it for me. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I attended a couple of different staff meetings, uh, which is kind of nice. Highway has a kind of a staff meeting quarterly, and, and last Tuesday afternoon, or Tuesday around noon, they had a meeting inviting me out, which was really, really nice. And the same at the assessor's office, did the same thing last Wednesday, had a staff meeting. Most of the departments, we've really tried to encourage them on your behalf to hold monthly staff meetings and try to get around to those. And it was perfect time for it. Uh, I did have a, a reference call lasted about an hour in regards to Commissioner Doug Hips. Uh, has made application to be on the university board of regency from this area, and, uh, he had asked if I would be a reference for him on that, and it was quite an extensive interview of 12 questions that they went through. I would like to, I, every once in a while, it's good to kind of go through and update the, the, um, guidelines. I know when you, when you vote on your committee assignments, you know, down on the bottom here, it says per diem payments approved, appointment. But sometimes it gets to be questions on what is, what is mileage paid for and things like that, so. I'd really like to meet with the chair and the vice chair, if I could, the, this next week, and, and so that we could just coordinate some guidelines in regards to that, so everybody has a clear understanding of that. I think that would help. We have a new commissioner coming on, and, and I know she has lots of questions, and, uh, sometimes we, I talk to, to Lori and back and forth, and talk to other commissioners, and there's some different interpretations as to what, so I think it'd be good just to review that again, if we can. The commissioners were invited over at 10 o'clock to the Incon Center. The sheriff's office was having their swearing-in. It's getting a little late on that, but also you're invited to, uh, the, uh, the Old Worth Community Center for lunch at about 11:00. The sheriff's office is sponsoring, if you'd like to, to do that. Bill mentioned that to me. A couple more things, too. Most important thing first is to thank Kevin. I didn't say a couple, three things, did I?
I still, still got a smile on my face.
Well, the, the important thing first, and that is to, to, on behalf of, of the county, and, and I know the commissioners feel this way as well, but my, uh, my, one of my able-bodied bosses here reminded me of it as I sat here, to thank Kevin for an excellent year. I think we had a extremely good.
Yeah, I neglected to do that, too.
And the county.
Thank Kevin for his leadership for the past year, too. It was a good year for the county, and a lot of that has to do with your leadership, so thank you.
Yeah, cool. Good to say.
And to go through an election at the same time. Does create extra stresses and stress.
Was there an election there?
Uh, there was, there was.
Yes, there was.
And one, one just other note, and you probably saw this in the paper, but the reason why I bring it up, it, it got nothing to do with North Dakota Highway Patrol, of course, not that I have any association with them. But if you notice in the paper, that they made a drug bust out in the Bismarck area of four and a half pounds of heroin.
Oh, boy.
Street value of about two and a half million dollars. And, you know, you have just approved getting another dog. This, this was hit on by a canine, one of the patrol canine on a traffic stop, and it was sealed in a vacuum-sealed block of, of bricks, wrapped in packing tape, and covered in grease. And that dog still picked up on that. So if we don't think we have that in rural North Dakota, Minnesota, here's proof that we do. Two and a half million dollars of street value. So I think your, the, the sheriff's department foresight in renewing their dog, and also your support of it, is really, really important to the rural communities, so. I thought that was relevant to bring up. So that's it, Mr. Chair.
I got one more.
Frank?
University of Minnesota is holding a, on the Farm Bill. It's out of the Marriott today from 1:00 to 3:30. There's, uh, uh, some sort of, it's a semi, education seminar on the Farm Bill, from 1:00 to 3:30.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, I want to acknowledge something that was on our consent agenda today, and that was the $400 donation from the Morad Thrift Store for the canine program. I just, anytime that we get, uh, public contributions to help in areas that improve our departments, it's, they're worthy of being recognized, and I want to thank the Morad Thrift Store for, for their donation.
Absolutely, thank you. Anything else? Wayne's been waiting for this. Jenny, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Vicky, Brian? Jenny, anything in your first meeting?